The council of committee of the whole, sorry, order. Maybe sixteen twenty twenty two seven. Everybody's information, Eric. Council Elseworth and city manager at the minister on zoom. Chamber. To acknowledge that we are treaty five territory and traditional land of this situation creation. And a whole lot of people and that we're all treaty people. The approval of the agenda, does anybody have any? Questions? That's approved. And also call. All's there.
Thank you. I won't take up much of your time, but I appreciate you, uh, mayor and council for allowing me to come here tonight. Do a little bit of speaking. And I respect all of you for the job that you do in this community because it's a, it's a tough job. I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much. So I've been here in Thompson since nineteen eighty five. And I've seen a lot of changes. And I know it's a tough job. What we're facing as a city and what we're doing as a city. But I come tonight with some suggestions. And maybe there's some help that that can be given. But I have an issue with. And I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. But I have an issue with the Thompson Inn right behind my restaurant. And it's my responsibility to pick up their beer cans every day. Every day and their boxes. And to allow them to sell their liquor. Those people to come and sit on city property, which is the library. And the mayor can attest to this because I called her out one night to come and have a look at what's going on down there. And to sit on my property and drink the liquor. And then throw their cans all over the place. I suggest that. They need to have security. And they need to have somebody on staff. That can deter the, the people from coming there and buying liquor and then sitting outside and drinking. And our bylaw officers, correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't think they can arrest people. And they're not there at the right time. They're, they're, they should be starting at six o'clock at night and working till two in the morning. And they're not, they're not, they're not able to do that. What the bylaw officer are doing is a great job, but it's not helping our community whatsoever, as far as I'm concerned. And I think we're paying a lot of money for those bylaw officers and they're not allowed to do the job that we expect of them to do. And they probably expect to do. So. I know a number of years ago. Pauline and Les would notice they passed the bylaw to make the bridge at the river. From a seventy to a fifty. I'm sure city council can pass a bylaw to make sure. That they get security and that they pick up the garbage from the city property, from the AW, from the subway. From that whole area, it's just solid, solid beer cans all day long. And I'm tired of picking them up, you guys. I pay my taxes as a businessman in this community. I need to get a percentage of his beer sales and if I'm picking up his stuff. And it doesn't sound like much. But when you're picking up twenty to thirty cans every day in the winter. And then a couple hundred every week in the summer. It's a lot of work. Why are we doing that? Why, why, why do we have to do that? And why does the city have to do that? And the city, the city truck came by one day when I was picking up a couple of years ago. And she asked me if I, if I do this every day. And I said, yeah, she shook her head, got out of her truck, put her gloves on, she helped me pick up the rest of the cans. So we, we need to take a long look at it. And I think, I think you guys can give me some help on that. I really do. Because there's no, there's nothing going on there at all. It's just a free for all. He sells his liquor and they sit down there and they, and they drank it right there. Especially in the summer. And that's, that's not right. And you phone the RCMP and my drive through as you come in. And this is all, I'm all surveillance. This is all on video, you guys. The drive through is right there. There's five or six people sitting on either side of my drive through drinking beer. There's ten behind there on the other curb drinking beer. The library is full of them sitting there drinking beer. And on the TI property, they're drinking beer. And I'm doing my air conditioner units with my son. And I call the RCMP because my customers can't get in. So I call the RCMP. They come, one guy shows up, what's he gonna do with all those people? Drinking beer with it. So that's all I'm saying is that if we can pass some kind of a law, bylaw to get them that they're responsible. For when they sell their product. And they're responsible to move the people along if they're gonna stop right on their property, they're, they're drinking and they're allowing that to happen. You can't, I think that can't happen. That's against the law. So I'm asking you to think about this long and hard and see what you can come up with. I've had them, I've had them dump. Chicken and Terry Lowens breed, is, is it Terry that works here? Yeah, well, I phoned Terry, I got pictures, I sent him into him, they're dumping old food that's disregarded from the restaurant and the birds are all in there and then they come and defecate all over my building. I mean, I keep a pretty neat chat, I really do. And I did Friday, I spent sixty thousand dollars on two bathroom renovations. And another four hundred thousand dollars for a group bar and for an inside renovation. That's a lot of, lot of cash to drop. And then. I'm not feeling sorry for myself. I'm just, it's the betterment of our community. I think something needs to be done and it's got to start here. And this is where, this is what has to happen. And like I said, I, I'm not saying anything negative about the bylaw officers at all. I'm just saying though, I don't think the program is working. Maybe, maybe there's something we can do or you guys can do. Upgrade that, upgrade that program because it's not working. The other thing I wanted to talk about, there's a couple of other points, the garbage. I lock my garbage bin. And I have no issues with my garbage. Nobody gets into it. The wind doesn't blow it up. It lives up, birds don't get in it because it's locked. I get two dumps a week. We open it a half an hour before the guy comes and then we lock it after he leaves. It's not that hard to do. That needs to be done in our, in our community. That's gotta start being done. And the other thing that needs to be done is snow removal. You take a look at the, right now, drive over to the burnt wood, to the plaza there, that burnt wood mall, and you look at where the snow is melted. You don't have to haul your snow away all year, but at the end of the year, as it gets melted down. That needs to be removed because all that litter blows through our whole town. And it's great to see, I saw the guy and I smiled and laughed and I was happy. The guy's back with that little cart picking up the garbage. And I go, wow, awesome. You know where he was? Walmart, because they do not remove their snow. And all the garbage is blowing on the city property and he's standing there picking it. And they got two guys from Walmart raking the ice and letting the garbage blow all over. You know how windy it was on the weekend, you guys? What do you think is gonna happen to that garbage? It's gonna melt and just blow away. We need to look at that and we need to say as a community. Once a year, at the end of the year, you need to haul your snow away. Then you put it over there by the pool, correct? Nobody sees it. Nobody sees it then. That's just, this is just thoughts, you guys. I'm not complaining, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not leaving Thompson, I'm retiring. I'm not leaving Thompson and I, I don't want to look at this anymore. I, I'm trying to come up with a solution to help us to get our community to look better than it is. Like, how do you attract someone into Thompson? When our community looks the way it is, it's tough. We have to, we have to take a long, hard look at it and everybody needs to get involved. Everybody. Needs to pick up their own litter and their own garbage. And. The. The garbage cans in the wintertime. I don't know why we don't pick all those garbage cans up in the fall. All those city garbage cans, I don't know why we don't pick them all up in the fall. Because come December, you don't see them anymore because they're buried in stone. Now you got the poor maintainer, he's driving the, he doesn't know where that garbage can is and he's knocking them over and breaking them. I, I think if no one's using them anyhow, they're buried in stone. That's something that could be looked at. Pick them up and put them back out in the spring. That needs to be done. Couple more things, real quick. I would like to know. On the acre law, acreage lots. How, how we're doing on that and what's gonna hap, going to happen and when it's going to happen. I would like to know that. And the last thing I'd like to know is when the RCMP are going to tender the food service order, which hasn't been tendered for years now. I'd like to know when they're gonna do that. Well, basically, like I said, I, I'm not here to complain and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I'm a concerned citizen of Thompson. I just wanted to make a couple of suggestions that. First of all, I, I want to stop picking up beer cans on my property. That's a big must and I'm asking you guys for help. Second of all, the other things are cleaning up our litter and those are some ways to clean up our litter. That's all I have. Thanks for letting me come tonight and express my opinion to you and, and. Let you know that I want to be here and I, I want to live here and I, I don't want to do what you guys are doing. I respect what you're doing. I really do. It means a lot that we have people like you that step forward and take this role on. I, I, I'm very appreciative of that. I don't want to do it, first of all. I can't do it with what I'm doing at the restaurant. It's too much. But anyhow, thank you very much and I appreciate that.
Regardless of your questions, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I was just gonna ask. If you're able to answer some questions right now or if you want to leave.
I have them written down.
Joe, I can leave. We're good?
Sure.
Hey, thanks a lot, you guys. I didn't want to take up too much of your time. I know you're busy. Thank you. There's no hockey on tonight, but I'm still gonna.
Thank you.
She's got my email. Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you for that presentation.
I'm gonna touch on one thing that Rick just brought up here and that's the. The hauling of stone in the springtime. I've done it for decades in this community. And I can dump clay, no charge. I can dump concrete, no charge. If I want to haul stone in Thompson, I have to, but there is a charge in the city of Thompson. They probably make about twenty five hundred dollars a year. Because of this, I haven't hauled a flake of stone in this community in over three years. I will not be. The guy that, that collects the taxes for this room to pass it on because. You guys, well, you can't be that short. You need this couple of thousand dollars. And I do a service to this community. I have, like I said, for a decade, but I will not, and I have not. Last three years, I had a rough. Can't put anymore.
Anybody else? Robert Charkley, did you write it? Also on what Rick was saying about the drinking and that public intoxication, there is a law case and simple. The RCMP are to charge people with it. And I don't see why that we pay the RCMP in this town to provide a service for us, that is part of their service. So I would suggest the city council get on the ball, make them do their job. I pay taxes to make sure this is done. So let's get it done. Thank you. All right, work, community feedback, comments? Again, more comments? Comments? To. Reports, six point one, the finance report, April check register. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just as typical chair that the check registers are attached and there's a marked version for council's review.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, thanks, Deputy Mayor. My question was about check number zero zero three four three eight eight for sixty eight thousand one hundred one dollars to the Y for the ship program. Was that, that's the city of Thompson money or? Um, maybe the city manager can jump in there.
Yep, the funding for the ship project at the YWCA is flow through funding from the federal government. It's overseen by the community advisory board, which is a board made of community members. They then select projects that receive funding through reaching home. So it's one of these flow throughs where the federal government gives the city the money. The city basically writes the check on behalf of the entity.
Okay, thank you. I, I suspected it wasn't. Thanks. Also about to.
I just have to ask about check number three four three six four fifteen dollars to the city of Selkirk. Just wondering what would pay them fifteen.
City manager?
Yep, that's, um, if you remember, council passed a resolution for us to hire a screening officer. So that if people had tickets, they wanted to dispute, they could pay a, a screening charge. And that would be my assumption is that would be a, a screening officer charge for hearing a case where someone wanted to dispute a ticket. And I believe the city of Selkirk provides their director as the screening officer on behalf of the city Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As I said, I just about three question. Number one is the lawyer fee. So how much we actually budget? Because throughout the budget, the meeting, I never heard about that line set. Nine items about the lawyer fee. So do we have a budget for that? Looks like it pretty high every month that we are paid.
Yep, as I provided council report in the early part of this year of last year's legal fees. Council does budget an amount every year and then there's variances. Some years it comes in above, some years it comes in below. So it's something that the administration monitors. But then depending on what the cases are, sometimes they're, they're expenses we can't get out of. Especially if it's a legal inquest or something that's called by a court, we are required to partake in it.
In question is about the, the pumping fee from the valley. Looks like getting higher and higher, but the consumption is getting lower and lower. So can someone explain to me? Why the consumption down, but the pumping fee is going up?
Uh, with respect to that specific charge, we'll have to check with the CFO to see the quantity that's with it. So was that over several months? Was that half a year, a year? I don't know those details. So we'll have to get back to you on those details about what, what quantity and time period that covers.
Thank you. Final question. About the. Check zero zero three four three five two twenty seven thousand three hundred and forty two dollars. So now we become monthly expenses. So before that, the first time that we found out, he said was a. A standing order, but now it becomes so many months. Are we decide to go out and tender this job or we just do continue giving to one particular company for that?
Yeah, my understanding and discussions with the department is that service requirement for that service has been discontinued as of this month.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Okay, one, two, recreation, public safety, work for recreation, public safety.
Well, I've learned some of the activities at the public safety department and recreation.
I'm asking, try and speak up a little.
Okay, I've outlined some of the activities at the public safety and the recreation department at the moment, not this last few weeks.
Well, has everybody had a chance to review it or do you have any questions?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. One more. Just a couple of comments more than anything. Um, first of all, the record like the GB is a, is a good project to, to give our youth something to do while in the evening. It's until nine p.m. Um, so that's, I think, is positive. And then kind of in conjunction with what we heard from our delegate and some of our comments. Just wanted to note that in there it has the numbers for the intoxicated persons detained for two thousand, twenty twenty one and it was nineteen hundred and eighty one. Um, I believe it's something like two hundred and seventy that our CSOs contributed with, but if you look at that number, it's fifty percent of the population of Thompson. So. I just, and I know we've requested the RCMP and I hope they are keeping that data. As far as residents and non-residents, so just that comment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of comments for me under the recreation. I think, not to throw our director under the bus, but it's okay. I would suggest she gives a little blurb on the record. If the public is listening, maybe you can get some people that want to jump in and be a sponsor or be a part of this. I just thought maybe that'd be good for the public to hear your ideas, what the record is.
Okay, yeah, sure. So the ice is out there at the GB arena right now. So our plan is to. Put bigger games and there's the ping pong tables right now that are currently in the lobby. We will go into the GB arena. We have air hockey tables that we're looking, looking at purchasing a few different bigger items. Air hockey table, baseball tables. Big four checker games. I'll talk my head out of this, but. And also some board games that parents can sit at the table. So when you go into the GB, the plan is to have table, a table section. Um, that people could play board games at while their kids are playing some of the bigger games. Um, so we're hoping that we're gonna try to have a variety of different things in there. So it's not just for teenagers. Seniors can go in and play the games that are gonna be in there. Um, anybody with disabilities can go in there as well. If you, we're gonna be able to, it's gonna be a drop in center. So the plan would be. Probably every two hours, you'd pay a minimum, be, say, five dollars and you get to come in for two hours and then we would close it down for a half hour just to make sure everything's all good. Then kind of start it up again that half hour later. It could be rented for birthday parties. Team building events, somebody wants to rent for a team building event. So the plan would be if the GB is gonna be rented. Um, for something else, we have some video event, just say, for instance. The police who would take, have to take everything out and store it off to the side and then we would put it back in. The plan would be the winter months, obviously, when the ice goes back into the arena. Would do a smaller scale, but to when the gym, the gym is not being used. We will be advertising it, the work from the communication officer to advertise it. Either on our, or. Offside, on top. So we'll be advertising it there, our social media, correct group.
Oh, yeah. Just want to follow up. So I see, thanks for that. And so I think it's good for the public to know that we're trying to do initiative for some low cost recreation for all ages. And if any organizations want to become a partner, they can contact the rec department. I think in the record report, it's also important to note for our user groups that we're gonna have a consistent. Use of when the ice is going in and when the ice is going out. So it's itemized here that. Ice is gonna be back in the CA arena on August second and GB read at the beginning of September and there'll be annual planning moving forward. So everybody will be organized with consistent dates. I think that's really huge. And it's good to see that we're gonna kind of streamline that and get it back. I do hope that the department is continuing to work to get our on ice bookings and payments straightened out. So our user groups will be able to. Have, and our people who just want to rent our facilities, that we can make that a lot easier for the fall coming up. So. The only other question I have is if there's gonna be a leisure mark and is that something that we usually put on? Or is that, how does that have worked in the past? We haven't done it in a while because of COVID, so.
We do, and this is the city event, we do put it on and we are actually just starting to organize it.
Perfect. Okay, and I just have one more thing under the CSO report. I think it's also important to note that we increased the complement in April to four officers. And the hours of coverage in five days a week and, and the shift work that, that entails. And maybe we need to do a little better way of communicating that also to the public. On, on how that program is kind of back up and running and that we have increased numbers just very, very recently. So, thank you.
There any other questions? House, Paul?
Yeah, thank you. Recently, there's been some notice put out with respect to the pool. Educating the cost of fifteen million on that. Can you clarify for the public what the actual cost is that we know of now is public?
I, I don't have that information.
City manager?
So the latest estimates that have come from StanTech, the cost of the pool would be about nineteen million dollars. With an inflationary factor of up to possibly twenty four million dollars. So that's the range that StanTech has currently given us. They've also noted that there's volatility in the market because of the. Uh, the closure of the steel factories and whatnot that are coming out of COVID, but now the additional pressures of the war in the Ukraine have affected commodity prices. So. There's a great deal of uncertainty moving forward, but the latest sets of numbers that were presented to council have ranged from the nineteen to twenty four.
Thank you. That's good to get an answer for that.
Rick, what, do you have anything else that you'd like to?
Oh, the fire truck, I guess I could mention something on the fire truck. The truck was ready to be here. It is ready, but it can't be called. So we're gonna leave it in Winnipeg right now, so they can deal with that instead of putting it up there, bring it back down. So. The fire chief told me today, there's still a little bit of folks, maybe two weeks.
That's what your report had.
It had that, yeah. So we kind of initially thought two weeks, but even with the, the re-pause, so she.
Thank you.
Public works.
I need a couple of things there. Obviously, it's a hot season, so. The weather we're getting, the, the freeze thaw and then all the rain weather bottles are, are there. Our crews are out from seven thirty AM to twelve thirty AM fixing bottles. Well, our street sweeping program has started as well, the same, everyone's same hours, seven thirty AM to twelve thirty AM. Currently working on Thompson Drive, which is true, Boston is down there. Have the list in order of how we're gonna be doing the residential areas. We're asking residents to have their lawn swept prior to, to us being on the street. So it's not a mess behind us after we have already finished the street. We'll be releasing PSAs a week prior to us entering the area, just so residents are American, are reaching sweep. Uh, last thing I want to highlight, brought up by Mr. Over, our area tenant, Daniel, this is fifteenth season of the city of Thompson. Fifteen years he's been out there pushing the exact same part. He doesn't want anyone picking garbage. It's a job that not everybody wants. Again, we're very happy to commit. The hard worker, rain, rain, sun, snow, doesn't matter what it is, he's out there. So he's gonna celebrate, Daniel.
That's nice.
Any other questions for the purpose of?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I like the, the schedule now for the sweeping, but I like to take a bit further. If the director from public work can lay out the timing. Especially like area, when they go to the residential, so we keep the resident have some heads up. So have you have any target? That would be great. If you do, that would be great. That piece of information is way better than you just, you assume, right? They all assume when you do it. So you can lay out the timing. Let's say you want to pick Eastwood area. When is the time that you guys will start doing it? So give them time to get the lawn. Sweep if they need to. That way you could work out perfect, right? So that would be one of my comments about that part. And. The second part is about the water sewer report. I like the old one, old type because you compare last year, this year, the month and month. This one doesn't tell me anything. So I, I like the old, old way, at least you can see, is it improving or is it getting worse? Is it getting worse? Why? So at least give us some perspective under that category. And I look at the wastewater treatment, it looks like you. Your department have doing a lot of changes, a lot of upgrade and improvement. And I look at the uh waste water treatment plan, looks like you, your department have doing a lot of changes, a lot of uh upgrade and improvement. So hopefully mitigate all this extra expenses, that extra work for necessary. So other than that. I don't have any other question. Thank you.
No, I was just going to note to the council's concerns, um that's something for communications we could definitely work on, is to give people tentative timelines. That doesn't mean it'll be exact, but we would just have to update it as we go.
Yeah, from this I go left, you run westward, so enough that finish by enough priority. Is that a clear up on? House of Health.
Thank you, Chair. Deputy Mayor, sorry. Um a couple of questions and one comment. I'll start with a comment first. I'm I'm alarmed at the amount of things that are wrong with our brand new sewer treatment plant. Uh I, we've known for a while that there have been issues, but to see it here listed is a is a bit of a shock, although I think I will admit that some of those are likely small items. I hope that we hold the engineer and the builder to account on those things that we can. Perhaps we can't at this point, but if there's the opportunity, I don't believe that that should, we should let that opportunity slip between our fingers. It just seems that for such a brand-new building that costs so much, we have uh so much issues. Uh the other concern I had was with respect to the waste disposal grounds with Manitoba Hydro taking the liberty of ripping down all the trees between the waste disposal ground and the highway. We've got a lot of uh blowing litter material. Manitoba law requires uh waste disposal grounds to have fencing. Where it's required to contain wind-blown litter. Uh we don't have that in place other than the hazardous waste depot. Because we really didn't need it there prior, thanks to the vegetation, but now it's something to look at. I'm just wondering from Public Works if they'll have a student on that this year or somebody out there picking that up.
So uh, yeah, yes, we'll have students out there, uh clean up that debris as well. Uh but Manitoba Hydro has actually come back to us just today, offering that equipment to help us clean up that term as well. But once the brushing was done, I immediately reached out to them because I knew that that was going to be a compliance issue. Because we had the vegetation there in Florida help us, but I knew it's a fence and it's going to be a ten.
Thank you.
Yes, and I believe through budget deliberations, the council is considering fencing for that area, but that will be finalized through our council's budget process.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have no questions, just a couple of comments. I am pleased to see that the city is working to get a debit machine at the waste disposal ground. I think that that's a very important thing that we need for the public, so the public can uh hopefully listen to that and know that that's coming. And yes, our city is dirty at that time of year, so I hope our community will get behind helping clean it up when we have our community cleanup program for the month of June. So I hope we all um step up and help clean up, uh because it is dirty this time of year, so we can all take part. And also for the jumpstart part, all you use using it, there's lots of you, please try and use as much as you can the recycling bin in the garbage can that's there. It's good to see that with garbage, because it means there's that many kids using that facility. And also that uh the uh grand opening on June thirteenth is going to be very wel- very welcomed by our public for that. So look forward to that. So thank you for the report.
Possible.
Thank you, Deputy. I forgot to ask this question about the waste disposable ground. Since we have this one-stop drop uh household hazard uh people set up. Is it, I I can't remember now, is any reason why you only pick three days a week?
I'll just provide advice. Uh so funny to have a little bit of one paper has to be there and that's that, so.
So so can I suggest it? Because uh it's not our staff to bring it in anyway, right? You just direct the people to just drop it off somewhere near it, right?
Uh we have to receive it. So whenever the payment number, like balls or any, or receive, we actually have to this, we see their selves, we learn our staff is doing that. And place it in the proper.
Somehow I'd like to see that program improve a bit, because I do have people go out with a different time and after came up. Throw their TV or any e-ways, so that gets where they end up. Johnston Road and that, so if we can improve that part, seats is free. So I encourage people, you utilize this facility, but it's just how you schedule people and things like that. And uh hopefully can come up with a program to accommodate that request by the public. Otherwise, it will see more e-ways all over the road, beside the road. So that that is more the changes I think we can do to make it better. Thank you.
Congress. Awesome. Currently the dates are Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. Is that correct throughout this whole lot of this week? That's a good, thanks. And it may, please feel free to refuse to answer this question. You have said a lot of, but all, that's a cut you off, off guard. Um I'm curious, we have a special levy for lawn repairs. That's been brought up a couple of times. I can't remember if you were speaking tonight or some other time. Really what I only want to know is the number of water breaks that we have that would require a lawn repair. Are they, is that number higher than what repairs we were able to do last year? Up the top, we're going to. Sorry. Catch you again some other time. Thank you. Is there anything that you'd like to? Thank you. Okay, we're going to. There's a part. Are you ready to do that over Zoom?
Yes, I think so. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh so this is a report from May third to the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. So on May fifth, participated in the National Day Awareness hosted by MKO. Along with Deputy Mayor Lenmark, counselors McMurdo, Prue and Valentino, as well administration. We participated in the CHDM trade show, uh May the sixth to the eighth. Along with council members and administration, we extended the provincial funding announcement made by Ministers Howar and Cullen on May the ninth. Along with council members, we participated in McCappy Day on May the eleventh. Uh May the twelfth, I uh became ill and Deputy Mayor Lenmark attended the MKOKTC Moosehide Campaign. Uh anti-violence against women for and children for me on May the twelfth. And uh Counselor Valentino greetings on my behalf at the North Stars Bank, but on May fourteenth. Uh also on May fourteenth, I understand Counselor Ellsworth attended the Community Safety and Well-being Strategy, the public plan that was outlined. And uh thank you to him for that and thank you to the public that was in attendance. Uh I should be back in form by Wednesday morning. Thank you.
Yeah. For reports, so we're going to recreation, the letter to receive from relay for life, requesting to waive fees for up and relate for lunch.
I've um been host again in person, so requesting that the fees that we've asked for the meeting of peace policy, they've sent us a letter. Their piece with their vet was taken place on, should we welcome?
I see your uh memo really over here set up waiting of these policy. And it has had the fees waived in the past. Does does anybody else have any comments? Anything further, City Manager?
House of Health. Thank you, Deputy. Uh I remember we uh used to waive half of it, right?
I wasn't, I wasn't present then, so I was presented with some thoughts.
So is this policy is a new policy that we do not waive anymore?
No, this is not, there's no new uh policy in place. I think it's only one that stand the policy, I would have to find it fairly true. Remembered saying, one is actually reference in the policy. And then um every organization that asks people, maybe these would have to.
Because the reason I've raised this question is like, uh I'm very sure about the, we are, we are waiving half of it. For one time when Donna was still running this program, I remember that. So this is, I'm going to change that policy with it, right? It's trying to remember that, that's why I'm asking the question. So now no, no longer waive for half, the new policy.
House of Health.
Yeah, I was just going to help you clarify that. This is the process now that organizations have to follow to request to have it waived. For any one full amount and that's what we've done in the past. Before the COVID checkouts, and so, yeah, I'm fine with this because it follows the process and the policy that we did change now, so that's kind of a request.
Is everybody all right with that forward? Or is this actually going to resolution of city managers?
I'd have to defer to um the director, but I believe that this goes forward for a resolution, so we need a consensus here to move it forward.
Okay, the consensus moves us forward for full waiting fees. Yeah, well, three or four, sorry. Everybody here already filled that less column or air smoke, concern elsewhere. Okay. All right, move forward. Thank you. That, uh a memo from the Record Recreation Community Services will address to the ice allocation policy.
So a few months ago, we made some changes to the ice and fines in respect to ice. And it was requested that we actually look at the ice allocation policy as well, which we did. Um it needed to include the general liability insurance, about the definitions. And we've also updated the ice user community rules. I've also created a user guide, a user guide to complement the ice allocation policy. And that will be provided to the user groups. And we have a meeting that's going to be scheduled just before and around June fifteenth. So maybe we provide that as well.
Any questions? Councilman Murrell.
Yeah, um just the one, thanks to the work. Um the general liability insurance, I know it creates a bitter cost sensation for um some of our users. It's a, it's the feeling that like a waiver is just not sufficient to protect the city in the case of Bible. So that's the most common uh method for recreation, like for other municipalities.
Yes, following one, there's a change, of course, I just to know that we always have to participate. In this strong agreement that we do have.
Okay, yeah, maybe once people become accustomed to it, it's a research issue. Thanks. City Man. Anthony, you're on mute.
Oh, my apologies. Uh thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I believe also the reason for the insurance, um when we were at the AMM conference. Uh there was um a review of insurance requirements to um Western Financial, who provides insurance for all municipalities. And specifically covered um different types of recreation that require the general insurance rather than simply the waivers. So there is some legality there that goes with our insurance through that AMM program, which is why that is being required. So perhaps that's something we'd have to just um communicate so that the the community understands it a little better. That it's not something we necessarily want, but it's something that's required to our our insurance program.
Thank you. Mayor.
Yeah, hello. Yeah, I I I went through it. It's it's all pretty good. I'm just sort of worried about the uh number of categories that that could get bogged down. Uh being, you know, three, six, eight categories and and that uh over the course of a couple of them couldn't be maybe put together. Uh just to make it a a little bit more streamlined, but uh thank you for working on this. I just had a couple of other small comments that uh I'll give to Sonya later. Thank you.
House of Health. This is strictly talking about the ice hunting, but we also, we also learned that when we went to a brand new, about the uh during the June and the now, then I hope that policies start to develop and if Anthony can help me up, I think it's something to do with the uh views and uh I forgot to open them up. Anyway, so I think it's a new thing that we need to have that policy placed to avoid that kind of problem. So I think you might.
If I could proceed there, Deputy Mayor, um what we heard at the AMM is that um all municipalities are going to be required to develop a, an abuse policy. Um it's basically if anyone is being abused or reports being abused at a facility or to a facility member of staff. The city's going to be required to have a policy on how to respond uh as part of our insurance program. Um we're just waiting for the AMM, we're waiting for the AMM to send us the templates on how that's going to be used. But it's it's a requirement through Great Western that we do so. So that should be coming, we believe, before the fall.
Uh, House of Health.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Uh I just have some questions or just a few comments. This is good. I I like all how you've done so much work to make some changes on this. I would feel comfortable having the user groups have their input before we adopted it. And the reason I suggest that we don't have a lot of user groups, I mean, would only be what North Stars, figure skating, hockey. Really, we used to have, but we don't really have any, many, many, many user groups. Because within how they operate internally might help how some of this, the schedule approval process and giving back ice. I mean, I know with going to the two winters seasons isn't going to be really realistic for North Stars or regional teams. Because they're one season and they wouldn't be able to get dates by July second. So I'm just thinking maybe it would be value in meeting with them before this gets adopted, just to see. There's no sense, they're saying this isn't going to work. Why did you do this? When it's only three or four user groups? Like it's always the same group of people around the table. That would be my only, my only suggestion. Um the other question I had was under invoices on the user groups that want an invoice, they have to get a credit check. So if you only have three or four user groups, is that common? Okay.
Yeah, that's something that's always been done. It goes through the finance department. So there's a credit check that you have to do, it's checked through finance or food. They have the invoice.
So, I just want to follow up. So a credit check that the organization has paid their bills with us? Because if they're just volunteers and that person is signing for the treasurer, they, that individual person may not want to get a credit check. You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, I I don't know. I got to get a little more information from the finance department. I haven't seen the form itself to kind of see exactly what it all entails. Um my understanding was any organization that wants to be invoiced and not pay outside is required to have that form filled out. And that's something that they always know. So.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting. No, that's all, that's all that I had was this points. Thanks.
Thank you. Um. Hello, can we suggest that uh we send that to those users before we have a meeting with them, so they can correct their question? You don't have to stick, you don't have to start a marathon, chat with them. Mission. Anything else, anybody? So, no. Oh, House of Health, sorry. There's uh, was there a definition given to Norman Regional versus uh minor ice users slash regional hockey? See a definition there. See one for regional hockey, but that's it. So I like to see one finding the two of them separately. We've ended up in terms of priority assignment in the same place we were before, in my opinion. Unless somebody can explain otherwise. And for that priority, the North Stars were paying a premium above the regular ice. Or at least I I thought they were. Till I see otherwise, I support this.
You're asking about if there's a difference?
So the Norman Regional Hockey, that's says in brackets behind it games. So if that is the North Stars plus the King Miners and the other minor hockey group games, that's fully understandable, supportable. I have no issue with it. If there's a difference between. Practices and games where North Stars are practicing and that takes up time. That we use by minor hockey's games. I have problems. It's just not clear. Thank you. If I can get an answer on that.
Which you're understanding for your.
So the fourth priority is practices. The priority for ice allocation.
So especially events, minor minor hockey.
Yes, especially events, Norman Regional Hockey Games. It's on page four of nine. So the priorities assigned here for second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh. Can you explain to me what? The difference between the second and fourth priority? One is games, one is practices.
I got to go sleep with the.
Council, can we get that answer for you with the next meeting?
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, yes, I was just going to suggest that we get any of that clarification and bring it back as per the previous recommendation. We're still going to be consulting with the user groups as well. So there is time before this goes forward to council.
Thank you. That's it for those legislative eight point one. I get some clarification. Am I supposed to read each one of these letters out or make her?
You can just summarize.
Deputy Mayor, I can provide a summary if you prefer.
Eight point one, the letter from Minister of Labor.
Now, so attached for council's review is a letter from Minister Raj Hellwer. He's the Minister for Labor, Consumer Protection and Government Services. This is a letter informing the city that the city will be recipient of the ISIP under the community and recreation stream. Total project cost of fifteen million dollars with a federal contribution of six million dollars. And a provincial contribution of five, four million nine hundred ninety nine thousand five hundred. With the balance made up by the city. So this is meant to be kept quiet until the announcements are made. But as everyone in the community knows, the announcements are made as of last Monday. So this is now public information.
I just want to point it out, this letter. And eight point two is the same data that we thought attached. So I assume should be a different letter from eight point two. Was the eight point two supposed to talk about jump to the book bar?
Uh, yes, the attachment for the Juniper Park should be a listing. So we'll we'll address that in the next one, but you're you're correct. The wrong attachment is there. So we'll we will send the proper attachment out to council. It's really just the press release from building sustainable communities with a list of all the projects across the province.
Oh, sorry, Council fellow. Thank you. Appreciate the problems, the federal government stepping up and providing this funding to. City of Thompson, it was surprised to me given the amount of money that we received for road and sewer real. So I believe very generous and certainly those that have lobbied Council Valentino and others. Including the administration lobby hard for this. Thank you so much. I do want to ask about the consequences of the maximum fifteen million. We know based on what we've heard today, we're looking at probably. This is my opinion, in excess of twenty twenty four, probably in the thirty million dollar range for any pool. Is there any consequence for this I to grant having a max on it? You're on mute.
Uh, no, there is no consequence. What the basically the funding says is that's the maximum contributions that we will see from the other levels of government. The variance in the the project cost, that's up to the city council.
Thank you.
Yeah, just quickly, I think. Council counts for comments there that's. This is certainly a lot that may be a bit of a surprise on top of the water sewer and the roads. But hopefully everybody in Thompson is is aware and appreciate that a hundred million dollars in capital for us in the next several years. It's really a great story.
Oh, Council Elder.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just need some clarification as well. We got a fifteen million dollar grant with all three levels of government. What does it mean if we can't finish the fall because of the cost? Do we lose the provincial and federal funding? We've we've discussed that some countries have alluded to up to thirty million. We know that we've talked to almost twenty five million dollars, which if you take out the municipal portion. They're talking a significant amount of money. So if we can't complete it, can't raise the money. And we can't in agreement to the venture, what does that mean in regards to the funding from the federal and the provincial government?
Uh, yes, um, as with all grants, if the project council decides that they are not going to proceed, the grant would have to be returned. So normally the federal portion comes after activities are done, provincial portions come before. But the money's typically kept in trust until it is spent. So council still will have to get agreements from the province of Manitoba. That council didn't have to sign, but if council in the end ultimately decided not to pursue this. Then the funds would be returned back to the program. As we also noted, our federal budget for this year has indicated that ISIP projects may have extensions to twenty thirty three. But that is not the case for the provincial side yet. So there is no variance on the time on the provincial end from what we've heard.
Questions? I'd like to make a comment with the. Ice of grants. As far as we've come with the. Plans, the execution of the design and the fact that that's going for preliminary design. All the applications that were put in not only for the pool or the aquatic facility and for the water, which are drug and the product. I'd just like to put a big thanks out to administration and to all of our. Councillors and mayor for all the efforts they put into lobbying for these funds. They reduced the burden on our taxpayers and city to get some of these. Really important projects forward. Forward. Thanks for all that work. Appreciate it. I don't know why you need to put one of those things together. And going forward, it's going to take a lot to make sure we stay on track. To spend those dollars as efficiently as we can. Thank you so much. On the eight point two, as said, we had the wrong letter in there, but that was the one for the Juniper Park. And you know, that's a three hundred thousand dollar contribution from the province, right?
Item eight point two is meant to be the the announcement from the province Manitoba on building sustainable community funds. The city of Thompson will be the recipient of three hundred thousand dollar grant. Towards the refurbishment to the Juniper Park and a number of activities that are laid out there. That project was submitted under the auspices of the Community Wellness and Public Safety Plan as a way to address low cost recreation for youth.
Thank you. And eight point three. Queued up the the letter from Municipal Relations, Mr. Ryan in part.
This is a housekeeping letter that arrives every year from Minister Clark's office of the Department of Municipal Relations. Basically announcing to the city its basket funding to be expected. And then there is also an attachment that lets us know that our basket funding that will be arriving shortly is one point two eight million. And that any changes to the basket funding based on census will be adjusted in September. This is a change from how it used to be done, whereas now the municipalities get seventy five percent upfront. And then the rest, the balance comes in the fall.
Oh, Council, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just for clarification. The basket funding is still based on the two thousand sixteen numbers. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, councillor, the numbers are based on the twenty sixteen census numbers for now. Any adjustments will come in the future.
If I could follow up, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. My understanding sometime back, we passed a, I believe it was a resolution to. Appeal or look into the census that was done. Based on what we've been told tonight, if if our census stands what was done, that means that there's a possibility. That we would have to pay money back. Can can the city manager tell the council and the public where we wish that appeal or what's happening with it? Thank you.
Um, just for clarification, council, no, we wouldn't have to pay anything back. What the department would do would adjust the second payment. So if there was money to be clawed back, it would be withheld from that payment. With respect to the challenge of the census, the administration is in contact with the Department of Statistics. At the government of Manitoba, reviewing the census numbers and what we believe the error is to be. So it'll be my job and work with my team moving forward to put forth a challenge of those numbers. And I believe we have a strong case at the moment, but there's still some legwork to be done in that submission.
Thank you.
Council member. Thanks, Deputy Mayor of Market. Thanks for that, Anthony. I I guess just to follow up, is there any idea how the time break for that challenge? Like, are we looking at prior to September when the adjustments might be made or to mitigate any of that downgrade funding?
I can't respond with a full timeline yet, councillor. We are working actively on it, though the challenge has to be in before December. So I'm in recognition of this, the administration will try to move that challenge forward, though I don't know what the process is on the federal side.
Okay, thanks.
Or sorry, I shouldn't say I don't know. I don't. I don't know their timelines. I don't have an understanding of how quickly they turn around.
AMM resolution ideas. And city manager, can you clarify that?
Yeah, this is basically, I'm still working on the resolutions that will be brought forward at the next meeting for council to review. But it was, are there any final ideas that council wanted me to include as part of the AMM resolutions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a quick question. Is the resolution that you are preparing, is it one of the will be according to the RCMP humanization cost?
Uh, no, councillor, because ourselves and the city of Selkirk sponsored that resolution last year and it remains active. So it's already an active resolution and we continue to lobby with AMM on that matter.
Any other ideas for the AMM? I don't see any. I think we already have a few that we've all reviewed. Thank you. Okay, can I have motion to adjourn? Council Valentino. Over all favor.
Hi.